At this time, I'll call our monthly meeting to order. And at this time, I ask that you stand for the invocation by Commissioner Langley and for the pledge by Commissioner Buzio.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this very moment in time. We thank you for allowing us to assemble here, God, to do the business of your people. Lead us and guide us in the right direction. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
[Inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask if you have your cellphone with you, at least put it in mute mode or either turn it completely off. We're down to item number C, the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Got a motion by Commissioner Buzio to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brin. All those in favor of the agenda, raise your right hand. That was unanimous. We're down to item number D, public comments. And our first one is Kathy. And I'll remind each one of you, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Kathy Vasquez from the community. And part of my remarks appeared in the Washington Daily News on March 1st. Arm teachers, absolutely. I believe in arming teachers. Arm them with smaller class sizes, arm them with invaluable teaching assistants and counselors, arm them with current books, computers, software, learning materials, and well-stocked libraries. Arm them with supplies that they don't have to buy out of their own pockets. Arm them with trained resource officers and registered nurses in each school. Allow them to have a lunch period that doesn't involve other duties. Provide adequate planning sessions. Allow them bathroom breaks. Assure that they have supervisors and administrators who understand and support them, and a board of education that puts the education of children before other considerations. Arm them with involved parents and guardians who support the teacher both in and out of school. Support them in their continuing education efforts. Provide adequate support staff to provide non-teaching functions such as hall, bus, and smoking monitors, and crews sufficient to ensure clean, sanitary surroundings. Arm them with a community that values and respects them. And it should go without saying, pay them well, as they are giving their lives to the most important investment we have, our children. Perhaps then with this arsenal of weapons, we'll have teachers who can effectively use their skills to assess troubled students' needs, intervene early, and mobilize resources that may turn a child around and help them become successful. Once we properly arm our teachers with the ammunition that we know works, maybe, just maybe, we will have gone a long way to preventing school violence, and we will no longer have to have our hearts and prayers are with you and candlelight vigils.
Our next one is Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you said, my name is Ray Leary. I'm the chairman of Citizens for Better Government of Beaufort County. And I am here today to clarify the record. During the last meeting of this commission on February 5th, 2018, the county attorney, Mr. Francisco, and Chairman Waters left the public with the impression that the county has offered to settle the current lawsuit brought by three members of the Citizens for Better Government and NC Civitas. That implication of an offer for a settlement is not completely true. The aforementioned offer was an informal request for a voluntary dismissal by the plaintiffs, not made through the county attorney or any other attorney representing the county, for us to voluntarily withdraw the suit. That was not an offer to settle. That was a request made through a back channel and was an attempt to sweep this issue under the rug of secrecy. Well, the suit will not be voluntarily withdrawn and will not be settled until the Citizens for Better Government and NC Civitas are satisfied that the board will comply with the letter and the spirit of the law and conduct the public's business in public. The North Carolina General Statutes require transparency from elected officials and for the public's business to be conducted in view of the public, with very limited exceptions, strictly construed according to the appellate courts of our state. This board's defense of this suit is nothing more than a proclamation that this board intends to continue to violate with impunity, North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11A. We would suggest this board and the county attorney review this statute and the appellate court's rulings related to this statute for clarifications on closed sessions. If after having done so, the board concludes that it can and will comply with the law, in both spirit and letter, the Citizens for Better Government stands ready and willing through our attorneys to reach a formal agreement with the board that will save the taxpayers of Beaufort County this extreme waste of their money. It's up to four of you Commissioners. Thank you.
The next one is John Anderson.
To the Commissioners, I want to say thank you for the ones who have voiced concern about the issue I'm going to speak about tonight. My name is John Anderson. I'm here in regards of Corey Edward Anderson. I am his uncle. He was my nephew. He died in the custody of the Beaufort County Sheriff, Ernie Coleman, on May the 8th. He was incarcerated from April the 28th to May the 8th. The family is still requesting and has been since May the 22nd, a meeting with the sheriff with agreed terms before the meeting, still no meeting with him. Policy that prohibits the calling of the family of those who are hospitalized while they're in the custody of the Beaufort County Sheriff. A document that Corey had listed his emergency contacts on has been requested, still not granted. Policies stating what emergency contacts are for, public documents, public policy, the families requested, we have not received. The other thing we've asked for is any and all updated medical files, as well as the files that Corey would have filled out when he was confined to the jail on April the 28th. Still, none of these documents have been given to us. I want to clarify that we had received a letter from the county attorney on the 7th stating that Rose had assured him that we had been given all of these records except the medical, that we haven't received those, and email communication also from Rose on the 22nd that we had been given everything to the best of his knowledge. We still haven't been given everything. We still want to know why. The latest development in the situation with my nephew, as of Corey's death, is not enough, and these unanswered questions are not enough, and one that raises grave concern for my family and my family members, is on February the 25th, about 1:30 in a public restaurant, a family member of ours was harassed, intimidated, and threatened by Sheriff Ernie Coleman without any probable cause. The sheriff approached him with his finger pointing, accused him of being there to arrest the sheriff, and he proceeded to tell him in a public restaurant that if he didn't get his ass out of the restaurant, that he had a deputy on the way that was going to lock his ass up. The reason I use that word is because I want to make sure that I state it like it was said. The family perceive this as a real threat. We perceive this as a threat by the sheriff to silence the family because of the things we're speaking out having to do with Corey. This really happened. It really was the sheriff. The family really feels threatened by this. So now we've gone from the death of my nephew to threats by a sheriff to lock up a family member for no reason. Obviously, if there had have been a reason, the sheriff would have sent a deputy, and he would have questioned or and/or locked up my family member, which did not happen. My question to you guys, and I know what was said before, that you guys don't control what the sheriff does, but where is this going to stop? I asked you before when I was here, does anyone care? Some of you guys have responded, and I appreciate that. But the question now is gone, not only from does anyone care, to what can we do as a family to protect our family and to get the answers that we want? We still want our answers, questions that we've been asking since May the 22nd. And now we want to know why it's okay for a sheriff to threaten a family member and nothing be done about it. That's what we want to know. We feel threatened, not only ourselves, but others as well. If he'll do this in a public restaurant, then what will he do behind the scenes or when no one's looking? You may think I'm over-exaggerating or I'm being whatever about it, but I'm not. It's a real threat. This is really how we feel, and we want to know what can be done about it, and we're asking you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next one is Dawn.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dawn Dolson. I'm here representing Pamlico-Albomar Wildlife Conservationist.
Ma'am, could you bring that microphone a little closer?
How about now?
Thank you.
Here representing the Pamlico-Albomar Wildlife Conservationist, P A W C for short. And we are involved in everything from the red wolves to the promotion of pollination plants in this area. Today, we are here seeking assistance in promoting and executing a roadside cleanup. North Carolina Ride is scheduled to be here for three days starting April 20. This will bring over 2,000 cyclists and their families to our town. As of now, many of the roads that they are traveling on are littered with garbage. Not only are we seeking a short-term solution, but we're asking that you help us with a long-term plan. Short-term, we are working with DOT to get the supplies and arrange for the pickup of the bags. They're very limited in funding and can't do this without our help. We're asking for volunteers, for groups, churches, individuals that will help us the weekend of April 7th and the 14th of April before the ride. As well, we are asking homeowners to pick up in front of their homes on either side, maybe 200 feet. Long-term, we would like to seek a committee or a county coordinator to be assigned to oversee this ongoing campaign. We need to educate, we need signage, and maybe enforce fines, and all this to be utilized to keep our road sides clean. Besides this being an eyesore, it can detrimentally affect our wildlife, as well as in areas where drains are clogged with garbage, mosquitoes thrive. So for the little piece of this, so we understand how bad this plastic is, the most common recycled plastic is called HDPE, and is used for detergent bottles, bleach bottles, milk containers, shampoo, blah, 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 motor oil containers. It is recyclable, but it takes up to 100 years to degrade. That's our education for tonight. So we thank you all for your support and look forward to figuring out a way to move forward as a group, as a team, as a town, to clean up this mess. And I will say, if anyone watching or here wants to help or volunteer or knows a group that can join us on the 7th or the 14th, I'm going to give you my own cellphone number, so if they're watching, it's 252-917-1825. Or on Facebook, we have a page for the Pamlico-Albomar Wildlife Conservationist. You can send me a message, just send us a message there, and we would really appreciate your help.
Could you give me that number one more time? I didn't hear the last one.
1825.
1825.
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. The next item is Dominion Energy Transmission Line rebuild. And Pam, I'll let you introduce the other ones with you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, I'm Pam Peckering, and Commissioners, I'm Pam Peckering with Dominion Energy, North Carolina. I'm the External Affairs Manager for State and Local Affairs. And with me, I have Dennis Clark, who is the Transmission Project Manager, as well as Tyler Hawke, who is the Transmission Engineer for this project. I have a short PowerPoint presentation to give you, to give you some details about the project. If I can figure out how to get it. Let's see. Oh, here we go.
Did our expert?
Somebody else's PowerPoint here. Okay, I'm not sure how to get it.
We'll get somebody.
Yeah. Oops.
There we go. You almost did it.
I'm not sure how to work the... Thank you. Just do that. We'll see if it's connected.
I hear it.
Someone, it should just note, and then it should... Okay. Sorry, we didn't bring popcorn.
That's not the first time somebody's tripped over that.
Start taping that sucker now.
That's right.
All right. Okay, I'm here to talk about the Everett's Leggett's Crossroads Delivery Point project that Dominion Energy has going on. Basically...
Can you get that light switch for us?
Basically, the project is a 115,000-volt line, and it was built back in the 1950s. And we are, it covers actually from Edgecombe, Martin, and Beaufort Counties, and it serves the surrounding areas. The reason why we're working on this line is we are going to actually do a rebuild. The line has lived its life, and we are going to be putting up a new line in place of this one. Okay? We will put up new structures. The existing wooden H-frame structures will be replaced with a core tin steel H-frame structure. The construction of the new transmission line is proposed to begin summer of 2018 and will be completed late 2019. And construction updates will be sent throughout the project. Now, the rehab and restoration of the area will be completed by early 2020. We're going to replace the aging infrastructure. We're going to maintain the continued reliability service to local customers. There will be no outages during this, well, planned. Planned outages during this. We are going to help strengthen the electrical grid and also require no new right-of-way. This will be built in the existing right-of-way. Okay, this is a map of the area, and it shows up here. You can't see it too well, but this is Everett Substation at the top, Wharton Substation at the bottom, and then that's Phase 1 of the project. And then we will be doing to Leggett's Delivery Point for Phase 2. Okay, this is the existing structure. It is, but you can't see it too well. Let me get my notes here. Okay, it's currently like 30 feet tall, and it's like a 50-foot right-of-way, which the right-of-way will stay the same. The new structures, golly. New structures will be similar to that. They will be a little bit taller. It says 31.5 feet. And of course, it will be made out of new material. And it's going to be the steel H-frame, it's going to be, I said 65 feet above ground. The width of the crossarms will be 37 feet, and the span links, the distance between the poles, will be 725 feet. And the right-of-way width will still be 100 feet, and the line will be in the center. Okay, this is a picture showing the cross-section of the view of the new poles. And this is also on the right, another view of it. It'll look like the existing poles, and then it will be the new poles. Just to give you, you know, kind of a contrast there. Now, the difference is going to be, which will be beneficial to those who have farmed or land around this area, because there will not be guys. The structures will be strong enough to be able to hold that line up without having to guide it, which right now, you see on the right where those poles are guided, this new structure will be able to handle the strength of the angle, the pull of the conductors on the angle, so we will not have to put guys and anchors in there. So it will be beneficial to those who are in the area who maybe farmed that land. Okay, we sent a letter out to the people that live along this area, and basically, I'm just going to give you a highlight of some things that we wanted to make sure that everybody understands. The pre-construction activities beginning summer of 2018, we will be doing some clearing of trees along the right-of-way. We call it pretty much trouble trees. If we have, because we don't clear it often, very often, but because we're building this new line, they're going to clear that right-of-way. If there's trees that are in that area that are going to be hanging over the new line or going to be, you know, potential for knocking that line out when it's completed, they'll be doing tree trimming, tree clearing. Installing temporary access roads using gravel or timber matting at construction entrances to allow equipment to safety ingress and egress various locations along the right-of-way. Now, typically, the superintendent of the project will visit the customer and tell them that they're going to be putting down matting and what they're going to be doing. And a lot of times, we work with farmers, like if they say, "Well, if you do it here, leave the gravel," or "We want everything removed." And we will actually talk to them and work those things out while the project is ongoing. Placing stakes at the locations of the new transmission structures. So people might see stakes out there that they, you know, want to have, you know, understanding of what the stakes are there for. It will be for the new poles. Okay, now, if you have questions, I have our local experts here with me, so if you have any questions on the project, we'll be glad to address them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Brin.
Chairman?
These poles that are not going to have wire guards on, you said that the strength of the pole itself would support the wiring. Has it been tested for wind?
Yes, it'd be designed for that.
Pardon?
The structure will be designed for, you know, wind loading.
One of the heaviest criteria we have for a loading for the structures is called NEC Heavy, and it's a quarter inch of ice on the line and 30 mile-an-hour winds. So, just for that.
And one other thing, have you heard of or is it in the plans for any solar farms to be parallel to the new line?
There is an existing one, I think, right next to Everett Substation. It doesn't have anything to do with this project. There's nothing on the scope that I have seen that would be built maybe in the next two years, but I can assure you down the line that somebody will be looking at the real estate down here possibly for that, but I can't say for certain.
Yes, Mr. Buzio.
How long is the project?
How long, what duration?
Or the length of it?
Complete this project?
Well, we're going to start this summer, so it'll extend into 19, so I'm hoping to have it completed by sometime in 19. I'm probably thinking it'll be fall. But then we got to come back and do rehab work, so that'll, it might run into 2020.
And it's 19.1 miles.
Yes, 19 miles a line.
So it's a huge undertaking.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I assume then it has the capacity or capability of feeding the grid? You can take power out of Beaufort County?
Yes.
And feed the grid?
Yes. There's another project going on over in Pantego that has a new line going up to Plymouth that you can actually see if you take a quick drive over east, and it's a lot of the similar construction. And that will be a part of the same loop, the same grid that this line will now be a part of, and can feed in both directions.
Okay, thank you.
So reliability should be...
Excuse me?
Reliability should be enhanced quite a bit because of that network of the line.
So, as Commissioner Brin was saying, it has the capacity to pick up power from solar energy facilities and take it out of state, and take it out of the county, and feed Virginia, Maryland, and whatever.
Right, it would be part of a, if generation was requested to be built down here, then they would, if it was up to a certain megawatt level, it would then go over to a transmission line that would be part of the 82 line if it happened to be in the area. If it wasn't, it would be further east on one of the other 115 KB lines.
And typically, when a solar company or someone approaches us about that, we do an in-depth study on planning for our facilities to make sure that it's not going to hurt what we already have. And if it does, and there's an impact, typically, that solar company would have to foot the bill.
They pay for the, a further upgrade on top of what may be there if...
Because we protect our...
So your primary concern is the residents of the surrounding county, Beaufort and surrounding counties?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Commissioner? Would you comment on when you think you're going to turn the Pantego Substation on with the new construction?
So you can, the new line that I just spoke of?
Yes, from Plymouth to Pantego.
This summer. I believe we spoke, August or September?
I think July or August.
Okay, let's go ahead and say August.
If I understood correctly from Pam with a previous meeting, you're actually going to feed this location from Pantego once you turn it on?
Yes, it's nice because we were able to do that project first, then this one. If we did an opposite order, we wouldn't be able to do that sort of situation.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for making us aware of the project.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
Thanks for investing in Beaufort County.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're down to items for consent. Is there any particular item that one of the Commissioners would like to remove for further discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Booth, second from Commissioner Buzio. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, vote 6-1. Okay, we're down to items for discussion. The first one is Commissioner Richardson's response to Sheriff Coleman, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, last month, for those of you that don't know, and I think everybody has seen the film, the sheriff came to the Board of Commissioners, accused the Commissioners of a lot of things, and in addition, attacked me, claiming that I had misused county money during a county trip, that I had stopped, made a... money during a county trip, that I had stopped, made a stop-off and the county had paid for it. That is totally untrue. I brought my expense form in to the county finance people and said there won't be one dime of this trip that is paid for by the county that, that I'm not entitled to. And my expenses for that trip, I was a hundred and fifty-seven dollar spread between the four or five people that went to the convention and mine was right in the middle, so there's nothing has happened. The sheriff is just doing what the sheriff is so good at and that is throwing out irresponsible statements that aren't backed up by anything. And so you saw that with the death in his jail here, that, that he doesn't seem to want to do policy on. So I don't have anything else to say other than that, because I think the public pretty well knows what's going on.
Okay, item number two is the update on the transfer of the money held in trust from the hospital authority board, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, that's my request to Commissioner Buzzio to update us on, on what's going on with that. In other words, has the money been transferred? When will it be transferred? How much money are we spending on the three two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar-hour lawyers that we got hired to work on this, so what's going on?
Money be transferred when the hospital authorities officially abolished or dissolved.
When is that going to be?
It's in the hands of the attorneys, David?
I spoke to Erin Roberts on Friday morning. She said she will have the paperwork to, prior to the next meeting, which is about three weeks. They're working on it.
That's all I wanted.
Okay. We're down to items for decision. The first item on here is the water bill waiver request, Brian.
Good evening, I'm Brian Hardeston, most of you know that. I'm representing Athens Chapel Church of Christ. I'm a deacon at the church and currently the treasurer. And unfortunately, with the cold weather that hit back in January, we had a water leak that went undetected for a significant while. In fact, it was your Water Department folks that found the leak and informed us and of course, as soon as we realized how much was leaking, we took care of it and resolved it. But unfortunately, we wound up with an exorbitant bill for, our bill went from an average of forty dollars a month to one thousand, almost to eleven hundred dollars for the month. The problem we had with it was that our building is a youth building, it was the old Surrey voting precinct for years. And of course, with the extremely cold weather, seven days of snow on the ground, nobody noticed it, nobody saw it, we weren't, didn't have any activity over there. So before the leak was found, you know, it was undetected and it was just basically pouring out and into the ground and into the ditch on the back and we had no knowledge of the leak going on. So the problem we have is that we had previously in July of two thousand seventeen, had a smaller leak where somebody backed over an old well, stepped the stub up and caused a leak, spiked us about a hundred and seventy-three dollars and we, you know, got the adjustment for that, not knowing that we were going to have this big one come up. So your policy is you can only have one per thirty-six months, I believe. And all we're asking for is any consideration whatsoever. We pay our bill regular, regularly, as well as we also help many community people with their bills throughout the year through benevolence. So we're just asking for any consideration the county could give us on this.
Chairman?
Ah, yes, Commissioner Brand.
Could we get Christine to come up and talk with us about that for just a minute?
Ah, yes.
I don't have the option.
Go through the policy on, on something like this and just give us some background on, on the leaks and how they're happening.
Yes, sir, I will and I can also, any additional questions? Sharon Rose as well as Connie Grady is here. Connie's the fiscal utilities manager in the Water Department, but I can give you a little history. Back in April of two thousand sixteen, it was identified that there was not a consistent policy within the Water Department, that staff was oftentimes put in a very difficult situation in order to determine when leak adjustments should be given and not given. Oftentimes Commissioners received telephone calls and it was just kind of a hit and miss type thing. So it was decided to pull together a policy. A policy was presented to the Commissioners, April of two thousand sixteen. The policy, a summary of the policy is again, as was stated, one leak adjustment is allowed every thirty-six months. Your bill has to be at least twenty-five percent over your average normal bill and then you would go and take the average of the previous twelve months. That policy was presented to the board in April of two thousand sixteen and it was voted on and it was approved unanimously. Since, it, it's something, again, that's very difficult for the ladies in the office to deal with and again Connie and Sharon, they've had much more experience with that part than I have, but it gives them a policy to fall back on. Since, because obviously we know that there were a lot of frozen pipes and a lot of issues this past winter, so we ran a total number since July of two thousand seventeen, Beaufort County Water Department has processed a total of two hundred and thirty-eight leak adjustments resulting in just shy of thirty-nine thousand dollars that's been written off.
This leak at Athens Chapel, what exactly did it cost the town?
I do not have that information. Sharon, do you have that? Or Connie?
The dollar amount for the bill itself was one thousand twenty-three dollars and some offense.
That's the charge to.
That's the charge to that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Which we paid a hundred dollars on the current bill that month.
Why?
And then we also gotten a late charge for the remainder part and we'll pay that.
And it is a very, and again, I'm, I'm very grateful and I'm sure you are too, that our staff was there actually reading the meter, it was on the rotation and they were able to find the leak.
It was just fortunate that we were there that day when he came and he knocked on the door and he said, "Y'all are using a ton of water, what's going on?" We had no clue, everything was fine. In fact, we had a small pipe problem in the fellowship hall portion next to the church that we had taken care of during that spring cold. So we went outside, pastor and myself, I happened to be there that day signing checks and, and the gentleman that was reading the meter and we started looking and it took us thirty minutes to find where it was leaking. That's how hidden it was. It was underneath our, what we called the youth house, which was the old Surrey precinct and it was in the ground at, underneath the house. So no water was evident outside. And so it was running, flooding out underneath the house and then into the ditch behind it. So if he had not contacted us and we'd not been there that day, this could have been much worse.
That's a question. Ah, yes. How many gallons?
He said two hundred thousand, I had no clue.
That bill, that was the bill that was for February the 12th, it was a hundred and seventy thousand gallons.
One seventy?
A hundred and seventy thousand.
And I think this ties into what Commissioner Brand was asking. What is the county's cost per gallon, if you can answer that?
What's your billing?
What it actually costs us to produce?
I, I can't answer that right now and that's something I would have to determine.
Well, if you look at the fact that we are not making a profit on our water bills, then the cost is what the bill is. I mean, we don't, we're not making a profit on this, so what did it cost to produce it? There's no surpluses in these water districts, so our cost is what the bill is.
I, I, yes.
Christine, the only, only thing that's holding you, keeping you from doing the adjustment is the prior one that he had before, is that, is that the only hiccup?
Yes, sir.
And we even offered to go back and pay that one in full in order to adjust in this one. We understand the dilemma here and we're certainly not wanting a complete free ride by any means, but you know, we're asking for any mercy that you can give us.
I, I think that the limit that we have is if I wrote this number down right, we've already written off, or we've already adjusted two hundred and thirty-eight down.
Since July.
Since July.
No, 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 that's total, that's for other, other water customers, other people that have had leaks and we have processed those leak adjustments per the policy.
When, when, when I received a telephone call concerning it, the comment I made was that I've been a Commissioner for three years and I've never seen this addressed and write down or agreed to forgive on the water bill. But I'm only one person, so.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm, every time someone asks me a question like this, I, I go back to look at the policy and if the policy is what it is, then, then I think we'll stick with it to a certain extent, but when we obviously have something that's happened that they absolutely didn't know about and just didn't repair it, it was just a freak accident by mother nature and I say that we, I would like to make a motion that we take five hundred dollars off the bill. That's my motion.
Okay, we got a motion to reduce the bill by five hundred dollars. Is there a second? Motion, motion dies. One of, one of the things that in conversation, talking with our Water Department, it, it may be, it may be time for us to go back and take a look at that policy.
That was my next motion.
If, if I, if I understood one of the comments that was made is that a lot of places exempt, you know, a certain number of gallons, anything above a certain number of gallons. So I would, I would channel and just for the staff to go and review that policy, review other policies from, from surrounding counties.
Well, I think, because I've been on the Water Committee for a number of years and I believe at one time the policy was one leak per year. I, I think that's what it used to be and I don't, I don't know that it was written policy, but I think that is what we used to do, but I, I really cannot remember. So, but I, I don't have a problem if, if, if you wanted to change it from, from being thirty-six months to twenty-four. I, I think the, the, the once a year is a, is a, it's a little too light and I think it should maybe go down to twenty-four months, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
It was a, this policy, and again, it was a new policy, so policies are tweaked as we go throughout, but it was a compromise. There are many water corporations that offer no forgiveness because whether you use the water or not, you still have to pay to treat it. So I believe at the time, two years ago, it was a compromise between the different, different policies that are there and we did look at what surrounding counties did and kind of tried to draw a, a middle ground there. But obviously, I can go back and take a look at that, because twenty-four months still would not help.
No, it would.
The chapel and their situation.
The other one was in last year.
This year.
I think we're talking about a twelve-month period.
Again, we've never had a problem like this and we certainly wouldn't have done it on purpose by any means.
You, you may be the first, but you're not going to be the last.
Well, I know during that period that there were several churches that had major water damage from, you know, the extreme cold that we had. And we were diligent enough to look at most of our facility and structures, but that one outlined building and because of the extreme cold and the time of the year, its activity level was very low and so that's why it was not coming.
And one of the things I'd also like to add, you've heard me mention numerous times before, the AMI systems or the automatic metering systems. That is one of the advantages to going to the smart meters, is that if this leak would have been detected earlier, that it would have been programmed and a report could pop up for staff to see that and then they could have immediately made a telephone call and to let you know. So that, that is one of the advantages. When we come to you in the future and talk about upgrading the meters, please keep that in the back of your mind, that, that customer service aspect would be a positive to that type of system.
Mr. Booth?
This won't, Christine, this won't help him now none, but I had a fourteen hundred dollar water bill and I, and I complained that if, if I had that much water under my building, it would be floating down the street, but I still didn't get no help. But saying that, I, I wish you would extend to his church the same opportunity that I was extending, help him with a payment plan to see if the, the minimal, some of the impact that.
That's included, that's included in the policy. We do, if, if the bill is over two hundred.
And that was offered on February the twelfth, I spoke with a Mr. Dahl of Beaufort County. He had already called and spoke with one of my TS owners about the adjustment and she told me the policy. And I spoke with him on February the twelfth and I explained to him the policy, but that I would be willing to set up a payment plan for however long, adjust off the late fees so the account will not appear any late fee. And he said he would have to speak with the board and I told him to give me a call back before the scheduled due date, so I would know how to proceed. I never received a phone call. But that's what I have done in a lot of cases with some of these customers that's already had an adjustment and according to the policy, they don't qualify for another one. I've worked out a payment.
Well, that's, that's good to know, I didn't know that, but, but it don't make you feel no better. I'm, I'm sending you a witness.
We don't have a problem with that. We only paid on the hundred dollars on the bills to setting up a full payment plan because the process was, they couldn't do it, we could appeal to the board. So we wanted to take that step and of course we got shoved back. So we made good fake payment more than what our normal payment was and we'll certainly catch this up quickly without a problem. If we can have the fees waived as to what that late fee was, I certainly appreciate any considerations.
I don't have a problem with waiving the late fees, as long as they are trying to do the best they can to make it good.
Motion to waive the late fees based on the pending appeal.
Second.
All right, you got a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Brian, it was a small gesture, I'm.
Well, you had to try. It's been twelve years since I've been back up here in front of you guys for anything. I hope it's. Twelve before I come back.
With a thousand dollar bill, I hope you're right.
That policy needed to be looked at.
Okay, we're down to item number two, the four-H livestock fencing fund, funding request. Rod, you're up and Erin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and other Commissioners here. We're grateful for the support you give the four-H program in Beaufort County. I'm Rod Gerganis, Director of the Beaufort County Extension Office and Erin Massey is here with me as well. She's one of two four-H agents that we have in Beaufort County. We're one of four states to have, one, four counties in the state to have that luxury. Erin represents a program that deals specifically with underserved youth, limited resource youth, and it's a quite, quite a dynamic program, which many of you are aware of already from the things that she's done in the last few years. She's going to talk to you about a request that we're bringing before you related to our four-H livestock show and sale, which she started last year and has grown considerably already this year and I'll let her talk a little bit about that and answer any questions you might have.
Good evening Commissioners. As Rod said, I'm one of two four-H agents and I, I run the livestock project here in the county. We were a joint livestock show with Washington County and years past, we've probably had seven to ten participants in the livestock show when we were, when we were with Washington County. And I created a space that kids could have animals and not be able, if they didn't have a place to keep them in their backyard, so they could keep animals. So we have kids who are from subsized communities to golfing communities that are keeping animals at Raising a Barn Farm. I'm purchasing the animals up front, purchasing feed up front. In the end, the kids pay me back so that I'm able to do the program again next year. So last year, we had our first livestock show in the county because we outgrew the Washington County barn. We had over sixty participants. Last year, we have eighty-eight participants this year. So we have fifty-three kids that are keeping animals at Raising a Barn Farm this year. So that's a lot of animals, a lot of work. These kids are working on these projects for three months at a time. It teaches them responsibility, it teaches them a sense of purpose, teaches them about agriculture. I have kids that are, live down Martin Luther King Street and are planning to go to college for agriculture. You would never think, you know, this, this fellow, young fellow, you never would have thought that he would be thinking about going to school for agriculture, but he is. He's a junior in high school right now. So we have gone to, well, I have gone to, pardon I, to Tri-County, asking for if they would give us some money to match, to be able to buy penning for our livestock show. So the pens that are, they're a structure that is able to be, it's movable. So the pins that are, they're structured that is able to be, it's movable, so it's the.
What did you say, they're built out of?
They're metal. It's a metal, metal piping, I don't think panels, fencing panels.
Welding, they're welded together, but they are portable, so they'll last us a good, they could last us a good 30 years, honestly. So it's the pinning for our show that we need and also the arena area for the show. So the total cost for the pinning for the area is around $17,000. We have written a grant and we received the grant for $7,500 from Tri-County Foundation.
We anticipated the cost to be 15 grand to begin with. We asked Tri-County for half of that.
Right.
It ended up being 16, five, I think was the.
The total, but they're expect, they're anticipating it to increase a little bit by some of the adjustments they have to make to the pins. And that was a cut down from 19,000. They adjusted the cost down for us about 20%. So we are asking for any consideration to help us to fund our pins. And like I said, that would be something that, it's a one-time purchase. We anticipate them to last for a long time for us.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes.
Seems to me as though some of the feed companies and PCS and some of the people that make money off of agriculture should be the place to go for the rest of that money.
I'll tell you where those guys come out at. They are a huge supporter of us. At the end of the, if you've never been to a livestock show, there's an auction at the end. The kids literally walk out into the ring with their animal that they've been working with and they are auctioned. The, the companies are not buying the animal, they are supporting that child and their hard work. Those companies are coming out and putting their money there. That's where they're putting their money.
Yeah, I can speak specifically. Northern Farm Bureau, they're putting a huge amount of money into the purchasing of the animals, but also the independent private companies, the Centgemans, Monsados, all of those companies that you're talking about show up to this sale. They have always, they did last year in our first sale and they're committed to come again.
Right.
And they will spend the money and frankly, we want that money to keep coming every year and that money will total up to a lot more money than what the cost of the pins are or the other supporting infrastructure.
We had over.
They do support it tremendously.
We had over 60,000, $60,000 in support come out for the kids last year.
Mr. Booth.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'm going to make a motion that we match Tri-County.
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a motion and a second to match. That, that new name is Tri-County Broadband.
Yes.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to ask one question.
Yes.
How long have y'all known that you needed this fencing?
Well, we.
We borrowed the fencing last year from Hyde County. They, they already have an established show and because it's, you can take it down and move it. It's not easy, but you can take it down and move it. We borrowed theirs for the first year with the anticipation that we would either borrow again or if we could find some way to match some funds and get some support, we would do what we're doing now.
Well, I'm going to support this, this motion, but from now on, when you realize something like this is going to take place and you're going to need it, you need to come to our, our, when we decide how, how we're going to spend our money in Beaufort County and apply for it then instead of coming halfway through the year. That's, that will be my request that you do that.
Any, any other comments?
Well, I do. I, I'm going to vote against this, not that I don't support 4H. We just gave them, what, $30,000 to buy a van? We busted this budget in Beaufort County right now by like 1.4 million at least above spending, more than what was budgeted. And I just have a problem with just keeping on putting out money. I think you can buy $7,500 worth of it this year and get you some grants next year and buy the rest of it. So I'm, I'm sympathetic, but I just can't keep busting the budget.
Any, any other comment, question? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed, vote with 6-1.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number three is the replacement of the chiller in the courthouse. Christina.
Again, as you see in your agenda book, I do have a request to replace a chiller in the courthouse. There are currently two 90-ton chillers in the courthouse. Chillers are part of the HVAC system. They cool water in order to provide air conditioning to the building. The one chiller, we've had issues. Both chillers have age on them. One was installed in the late eighties. This one was installed in the nineties. So we have been patching them and patching them and we've spent $6,000 previously this year on this existing chiller, again, trying to patch. If you'll recall, we've done the facility survey, we've been trying to come up with a plan, so we've been trying to stretch things out, but unfortunately this did not, did not wait on us. It went ahead and conked out on us. Chillers are comprised of different units. One part of that is a compressor. There are two compressors in this particular chiller. One compressor is completely gone. The other compressor is in need of serious repair. So the cost to replace the two compressors is almost half of the overall value of the chiller. So then you would still have the condenser, the evaporator unit and the valves that possibly could go out because they're over, are right at 20 years old. So the recommendation is to replace the, the chiller. You see the quote also included in this is to provide sound attenuation because this chiller is located in the basement of the courthouse directly below the clerk of court's criminal side, so sound is an issue. And then also tying it into the main building system.
Have you, have you looked into having these chillers rebuilt? I know it's about half the cost of, of a new.
We, they've looked at it and again, in order to go in and to repair it, you're at half the cost of a new one. And generally, the rule of thumb is if you're at half the cost, you're better off to replace than to repair. Again, because you're still only repairing the condenser, you're only repairing a small part of the overall chiller. You're repairing the condenser, but then you still have the evaporator and other portions of the chiller that are not, that could go out at any moment.
The, the one we're replacing is almost 20 years old, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any, any other questions of Christina? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Langley. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor?
Well, I just have a comment before we proceed.
Okay.
The comment is this, I mean, I can appreciate wanting a new chiller, but we're, again, we're 1.4 million, busted the budget and so here we are buying something new. I can appreciate Christina's recommendation to, to buy a new one, but for half of that price, you know, we can rebuild this thing and keep her going. So I'm going to vote against it for that reason. I just can't keep voting to bust the budget.
Any other comment? Okay.
Uh, one, one thing, I'm, I'm going to have to vote against it too. I, I would really like to see you look a little further into finding the actual cost of rebuilding the old chillers and, and get some idea of how long, what the manufacturer says, how long they're going to last.
What I have, the cost to replace, to just to repair the two compressors is over $50,000.
Mm-hmm. And, and to replace both units is 109,000.
To replace the entire unit. When you're looking at a chiller, a chiller is composed of, uh, let's see, compressor, condenser, expansion valves, evaporators, the power unit, as well as the controls. So you've got multiple components that work together to cool the water to, then to push it through. So, but again, just to re, repair the compressors is over $50,000.
I got a question.
Commissioner Booth.
Oh, have you put this out for bids?
It, we went with our service contractor that, that maintains things and he received multiple quotes from different manufacturers. A quote, we've looked at, you know, because the sound is an issue of the chiller in the courthouse, how loud it is, to move everything outside, that would be at $229,000. We didn't think that was a good use of the money. To replace it with a carrier, we currently, we have two chillers. One is a carrier, one is a train. The carrier has, we've gotten better service from that, so we brought in a carrier rep and received quotes from him. His quote was $138,000. So then the train chiller is not, has not traditionally been reliable, so we did not look at that. So then the service contractor looked at other options and the best option was a combination of a York chiller with the Bell and Gosset pumps.
Now, if you get, if you go the route of having it rebuilt, which is half of the cost of a new one, is there any warranty with that rebuilt unit?
I'm hesitant to, it's, it's not like a diesel engine would rebuild it, that you rebuild the entire engine.
Probably when you, well, probably when they rebuild it, they'll, they'll rebuild that part, but another part to go down.
Exactly.
Like your regular home unit.
Right.
Okay.
Cooling tower?
Cooling tower is located in the parking lot. So the cooling tower and the chiller and the air handler units, they all work in conjunction with each other to cool the water, to cool the air and then to push it through the building. So this is only one component of a much larger HVAC system.
Christina.
And the courthouse is one of the most complicated HVAC systems in the county.
Is it down now?
It is. One chiller is completely down. So two weeks ago, when the temperatures rose, we were unable to keep the, the temperature where we normally keep the temperature in the courthouse.
That was my question. If, if we were to hit another 75 to 80 degree day, we're in trouble, right?
Yes, sir.
And we're also in trouble as it relates to, haven't we had issues over there before with mold in the building where we needed to run the air conditioner to?
I'd say we have some humidity issues. I'm not sure we have mold issues. I think we have some humidity.
Yeah, you bet. Correct.
Christina, just to be.
Yes, sir.
Sure, and clarify, these compressors are almost 20 years old.
Yes, sir.
Correct? So for $50,000, we can go in there and they'll repair the two compressors?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we go for $109,000, according to what I'm reading here, and I think you said a condenser, expansion valve, evaporator, that's all replaced, plus the controls, the rerouting of the piping, it's all going to be replaced. What you're really saying is we're going to have a completely new system.
We'll have a new chiller system.
A new chiller system.
Yes, sir.
That's what I meant.
Yes, sir. And included in this, again, like you said, rerouting of the piping. That's not something that absolutely has to take place, but if you've ever walked through our mechanical room, you have to literally step over a pipe. It's a safety hazard. And so while we're pulling out the chiller, we're going to correct other deficiencies at the same time.
Any, any other comments or question before we take a vote? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? It was 5-2, Katie. Since we've, we're in a meeting for an hour and a half prior to this hour in here, we're going to go ahead and take a break for 15 minutes and we'll be back.
Yes.
Uh, in 15 minutes. We're down to item number four, the petition to name a road and Brian, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You'll recall at your last meeting, you had this in front of you, the public hearing and the public, there were no public comments on the actual road name itself. So we're back to the issue. I believe Commissioner Richard had expressed an issue of concern about the actual road itself not meeting the, the requirements of our subdivision ordinance. Staff went back during that time. We asked you not to continue the public, or to do the public hearing at the last meeting so that we wouldn't have to re-advertise and pay for it again. You did that. And we asked you not to act on it until this meeting. Staff, you go back and have a conversation with the section, with the folks that own the road or own the easement. The section that you're proposing to name, they agreed to widen that easement from the 20-foot to the 50-foot, which is required. We were not able to, to, to get agreement with the existing property owner who had the entrance road piece there to widen that, that easement to 50. Ultimately, it was our mistake years ago when it was put in and it was not caught. It should have been at 50. So we're, we're kind of hard pressed to, to, to hold those folks to really do anything to them if they say they don't want to widen it. So, but this is a public safety issue for us. It allows us to read, to name the road and to assign the, the addressing on it. So with that, we would recommend that you approve Oscar Tella Road as recommended in the, in the agenda item and under accordance with the public hearing you had at the last meeting.
So move.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I want to vote against this.
Let me know that.
Uh, the, the manager's right, you're hard pressed because ultimately the county made the mistake. The mistake was made because we had people who were enforcing subdivision regulations who were not enforcing them fairly for all of the residents of the county. They were enforcing them for good buddy and we wound up with a 20-foot farm road that's a zigzag where there should have been a 50-foot right of it. I'm not voting against it also because the person that, that petition for the road name did go back and I haven't seen the map, but I understand he went back and had another map made to make the right of way 50 feet wide. That doesn't solve the problem. The, the, the map has to be put on file at the courthouse under some kind of a dedication or whatever for that to be a 50-foot right of way. So if you vote for this, you, you are continuing to perpetuate the same sin that caused the problem to begin with. Board of Commissioners should not approve this until this problem is solved one way or the other. So it's, it's not a good thing. It's really not going to help public safety. It's perpetuating one sin after another. So I, I can't vote for it.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor of renaming it, raise your right hand. Those opposed, vote with 6-1.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're down to item number six, the additional funds required for the jail medical expenses to grow.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more item.
I'm, I apologize.
I know Charlie's excited to get up there, but.
I, I saw road in number four and road in number five.
That's okay. This is the road sign naming program, a little additional funding requested there. As you, as you recall, in our budget this year, there was $10,000 put in the budget for replacing road signs or putting road signs back up. We have instances across the county where road signs go missing and, and we put them back up for public safety issues. In the, in the agenda item, you'll see where we've spent a fair amount of that money. There are 25 road signs missing that we know of. We're working with, with our local fire departments in their districts to let us know when something's down. So we know there are 25 that are missing. It's going to cost us about 36, 35, 65. And then we anticipate another 40 or 50 to close out the rest of this year, which is going to be an additional about $5,500. So what we're requesting is additional $9,000, $65,000 to be able to, what we think will hold us through the rest of this year. I know the question is going to come, so I'll go ahead and tell you. We do now, those signs are put in with a bag of concrete. They are, the signs and the poles are purchased from the city of Washington and they have the tamper-proof mechanisms on them. So the problem is folks still steal them. Sometimes they have to work a whole lot harder now to do that. And I will tell you though, that, that scrap dealers are required to, when things come into their business that look like they're government-owned, they have a duty to, to report that and, and to let us know and, and contact law enforcement. So the state recognized that many years ago when manhole covers were going to scrap things, like that. So, so we're doing the best we can with it, but again, it's a, it's a public safety issue for us. We need to have those road signs up and, and we're, we're also catching up on a backlog that, that, that has been out there for a while. So we'd recommend your approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I got a question, Brian.
Yes, sir.
I know the city of Washington makes our signs.
They do.
Have we checked in to see if we can find a vendor somewhere that will, will make them cheaper than what they do?
My understanding is they're, it's probably about as cheap as we can get them now. I don't know exactly that answer because I haven't personally reached out and, and looked at that, but the ability for us to get them quickly and, and I think we're getting them at their cost, I think. I don't, I don't know that they're charging us anything above what their, what their cost is to produce them. I'm looking for them to follow up on that.
Okay.
I, I think it's a great partnership we have with them.
Any other question? Okay. Do, do we have a motion?
So move.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Busia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. All right, now Chief Rose.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have information in your packet in reference to a budget amendment request for more funds for the professional services medical line. This is the third or fourth installment of a conversation that started about October of last year. We knew that things were going to be different with the professional services medical line and everything that it encompasses, and it was going to be scrutinized a little bit more because of the change from paying an outside vendor or a business for that line to partnering with the health department with the actual medical plan, the jail health medical plan. Now, this is a different thing. Both of those lines cover what we actually do with the health department staff and the nursing staff at the jail. But that line also covers the cost for medical bills. That is different. You know, one is the program expenses, and the other one would be if somebody has, if somebody falls or gets hurt, if somebody has a medical event, gets transported to the hospital and seen, that those bills are different. It, it is, it is like looking at two different programs. The program itself, we started to look at in about October or after the first quarter, and we, we saw that the trend at that first quarter was, was that we were actually spending less money per month on the actual jail health program with partnering with the health department. But we were also seeing that the medical expenses over that same time were up. So then we started to look to see if that was a spike. You know, if someone was to have a heart attack, if someone was to have to have dialysis, or someone has to go at any time to the emergency room or to the hospital and then get submitted, then there's many costs that go along with that, you know, and, and actually cost outside of that professional services medical. But we were seeing that those costs were the ones that were going up. Even if we had Southern Health Partners, which we were involved in a cost pool at that time, once you get to the point where you are above that threshold of that pool, then the costs become part of the counties and then all of the counties. We have been very lucky over the last handful of years when it came to that cost pool that we would hover right around the area, that, that we would be right at the edge of that cost pool where we would have to pay extra money. Now, every bit of that cost pool, we were paying for. I mean, if somebody was to say that that is a benefit that we would receive for working up that business, that's not how it worked. I mean, they were a for-profit business that we were paying money to, to provide that service. As part of that bill would be that cost pool. We would be out of that cost pool this year, even if we were in it. So that is, that is where we are. We've got, you know, I keep an eye on the budget. I would be the budget officer for the sheriff's office. I've, I've dealt with every, every one of the commissioners for a couple of years now, some more than others. But our budget, each year, that we look, we try to keep as thin as we can. Each year, we try to get it to the point where at the end of the year, we have a surplus of right at about a hundred thousand dollars. We're actually still, with, with everything going on, even with the jail being shut down for over two months now, and the costs that go along with that, that have affected our budget, with everything that goes, we would still be looking outside of that, that we would be really close, really tight at the end of June with the, with the budget that we were given last July. But, through talks with the finance officer, is that now's the time that we need to be making adjustments to make sure that we are true on that. The, the lines that we talked about in the budget retreat would be overtime for every division, for the sheriff's office, for the jail, and specifically because of the, the fact that we're having to staff two jails while the jail's down, and then we're also having to transport inmates to and from about five or six different counties on any given day, have gotten to the point where those numbers are at that point where we can't just say that we can absorb the cost from these medical bills, and that we're going to have to have a discussion, and we're going to have to make the request of these medical bills, that we are, we are funded to the point that we can pay these bills that we have. Yes, sir?
Eleven thousand, four hundred dollars on correctional behavioral health. What is, what is that?
Um, and I probably should have done this at the very beginning. Of, of course, you know who I am, and you know Lieutenant Brian, but just for the record and for the public who might be watching, I did bring Lieutenant Brian along today. So if there's any specific questions about programs that she could probably handle more than I can, when it comes to, you've gotten the information, and you've had that for, I guess, about a week now. If you can point out exactly where you are on there, I can see if I can walk you through that.
It's on the first page, halfway down.
It's page, page fifty-nine in our book.
Yeah, page fifty-nine. Eleven thousand, four hundred dollars on correctional behavioral health.
Okay, correctional behavioral health is, I mean, it, it's pretty much what it sounds. We've got a mental health component that anybody who comes in to our facility that is either diagnosed, or we start having issues with behavioral health or mental health issues, we have a provider that, you know, through, I guess telemedicine would be the appropriate term, that we actually would have contact through Skype or through video conferencing with the inmate who is in-house and the doctor who is off-site for, at that point, mainly the mental health issues that, that we would have. That, that particular piece is budgeted each year, you know, and to my, to my memory, I can't think of a time that we have actually gone over in that specific subsection of professional services medical, but, you know, without a doubt, I mean, they're, you know, we, we are, we are dealing with people that are incarcerated in our jail that, that we have to provide mental health treatment for, just to make it where we can, where, where they can be suitable inside our confinement facilities. And that is a safety issue for themselves, for the inmates that they're with, and then for the officers that have to work with them on a daily basis.
Do, do, do we take them to a professional, or does a professional come to us?
Well, most of that, for that particular line that you're talk, that you were speaking of, would be telemedicine. We actually set them in a, in a location. They're looking into a computer or into a screen, and they're talking back and forth with that provider. There are, there are some times where we have to make trips, some are court-ordered trips, that we have to make for, for those services, and, and even with that, if it's a court-ordered trip for a criminal case, then we're still on the hook for having to pay for those medical services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
These amounts in, in what Commissioner Brian's talking about here, two thousand and fifty dollars, and two thousand and fifty dollars again, seventeen fifty, two thousand and fifty again, seventeen fifty again, and seventeen fifty again, those look to me like they are what it costs to do in a psychological assessment.
And that, that could be part of that. Some of that could be court-ordered. If there is an assessment that is done on an inmate, I would venture a guess and say that most of that would be, if not all of that, would be because it's court-ordered. Some of that, that money could be for, if someone is, is able to stand trial or something of that nature. But it also could be a lot of different things that, that just for the sake of, of being absolutely correct on it, if there's a specific bill that you have that you would like to see, then we can drill down and actually get that itemized for you to take a look at exactly what that, that is, if that, if that is necessary.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Medication versus treatment as far as, you know, talking to someone. I'd like to see a breakdown of that.
Yeah, if, if you can give me details, either by email or through the county office, on which bill particularly you would like to drill down, I can get you all the information that you would want on that.
I got a question.
You've got the City of Washington in here, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, but some of these bills, like five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, and then range to a hundred and forty-seven, fifty, you know, I would have thought the City of Washington would have been making pickups with, from, with emergency vehicles, but these numbers don't fit that.
Well, on, on that, once again, if you have a specific question about any item we can drill down, you know, some of that, you just don't know how you're going to be billed. If, you know, if, if they billed individually for every time that they did a transport, that would be one thing. But if you receive a bill that might be for a month of services, then, then that bill's going to show. Now, each one of those bills individually would, would have an itemization of what that is, but I mean, that, that's, you know, in essence, that's the question of, you know, if you get a bill from Southern Link, you know, you're going to pay what's on the bill. You know, if you get a bill monthly from Southern Link, you're going to pay it monthly. If you get it once every six months, then you'll, you'll pay it that way.
Well, what kind of services do clinical solutions provide?
On that one, Lieutenant Brian, if you, if you could, for clinical solutions, that will sit.
If I could make, gentlemen, hello again, I'm Kat Bryan, I run the jail. And if I could make a couple clarifications on some of your questions in general, Commissioners. Correctional behavioral health is the chief's, does our mental health. It's a flat rate per month. The numbers that you were seeing around the seventeen fifty, that was their monthly fee prior to their increase in our costs. The twenty fifty number that you're seeing reflects their increase in their monthly statement to us. We don't get bills by the month. Correctional behavioral health is actually running three to four to five months behind submitting their bills to us. So the day that, that we pay it out of finance doesn't accurately reflect that month's billing.
So it could be two or three months involved in.
Or four or five with them. They tend to lump bill us. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I was just noticing that you, you've got some on here, the correctional behavioral health, one's in September, then in October, but then it skips November because you got two on December the twelfth, one for two thousand and fifty dollars, one for seventeen fifty. So it looks like somehow we missed the November bill. That would have kind of leveled that out a little bit.
He'll send four bills at once.
Okay. This Southern Health Partners, sixteen thousand dollars. It's on the last page.
Sixteen thousand dollars was about their monthly, our monthly fee to them. That was a flat rate to them.
And this year, that would have been from July until-
October.
Until October.
And to go back, Commissioner Richardson, to go back to your City of Washington questions, why those numbers are kind of all over the place. An ambulance run from the jail to the ER typically runs about five eighty, five ninety. When we were using Southern Health Partners, they weren't scrubbing those bills as the law allows us to do at seventy percent or two times the current Medicaid rate. So actually, they're supposed to, by law, discount those bills to us. That wasn't transparent to us. They weren't doing it. We found that out after we left Southern Health Partners and started to bill from the health department and bill directly with the county. We now engage Prime Health Services to do those bill scrubs for us, and they scrub those ambulance bills. And to agree with what the chief said, sometimes they come in individually, sometimes they group those up and, and give us a bill for three transports that week.
And I'll, I'll go in and say, as far as Southern Health Partners, they were scrubbing bills. They just weren't as consistent as what they needed to. They were missing a lot, but it was actually to their benefit if they weren't very effective at scrubbing those bills, because, once again, going back to the fact that they were a private business for profit, and now we're at the point where, you know, we're trying to minimize the cost that we have. So we're trying to look at every way possible that we can, we can do that along the way while benefiting the health department and Booker County in general with the new partnership that we have.
We've got sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars for Prime Health Services. What is Prime Health Services?
Okay, that's a great question, Commissioner Richardson. Prime Health Services is something that we get through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association. It's a bill scrubbing entity. And how that works, they take all of our bills, there's a North Carolina general statute that allows for us to only pay seventy percent of a bill or two times the prevailing Medicaid rate. They give us that service. And how they make their money, because they're going to, they're going to hustle some money out of that as well, if we get a bill for a hundred dollars, a medical bill for a hundred dollars, and they scrub it to seventy percent and they save us thirty, then their cut is nineteen percent of the amount that they saved.
But we've got some pretty big bills here. I mean, they totaled sixty-seven thousand dollars. There's a lot of people that we are, that we are sending for medical services that are in jail. You look at these numbers, this total bill that you brought us here, and I don't know how this fits with the budget, whether you're asking for an additional one hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars, or, or what, but I mean, there's a lot of cases here of, of prisoners that are getting medical services.
Okay, so to speak to that, it's more or less the same amount of services year to year with some catastrophic events thrown in. When we were using Southern Health Partners, all the bills were getting paid individually. Southern Health Partners was getting their cut, we were paying directly to City of Washington for ambulance runs. If they went to the ER, we were paying the ER, the ER doctors, all the, when you go to the ER, you get several bills, right? So when those bills are coming in, those are being paid individually. Now that we're with Southern, with Prime Health Services, if we are sending that bill to them, and all the bills come through me, I verify that those inmates were actually still in the jail, because sometimes when inmates go to the hospital, if their last billing address was the jail, they'll bill us. So I have to make sure that they were our inmate at the time. Once I verify that, I send it to Prime Health Services and they pay the bill. That's why finance cuts a, a check directly to Prime Health, not to the ER, the ER doctors, City of Washington. So over time, as we get rid of all these, some of these older bills, and we train these providers to send bills to us or directly to Prime Health, so we're not double billing, which is what we've run into and caught some errors with that, then they'll all be lumped under Prime Health Services.
Now, I'm, I'm getting scared because-
Well, my gosh.
I thought that, you know, I thought we were looking like a three hundred thousand dollar bill for taking care of prisoners, and we only have about seventy in there at the time now. And this thing is doing what I predicted it would do when we turned it over to our health department.
That's a great question, Commissioner.
It, it is ballooning. I mean, I'm seeing a lot more money for the care of prisoners than what I ever thought I would see. We must be looking at six hundred thousand dollars a year in the jail alone. We're not required to provide this kind of service.
We are providing the exact level.
I didn't, one, I didn't hear a question. That was more of a statement.
Yeah.
You have all of the information in front of you that you need to have to understand what's going on, and you do understand what's going on.
I disagree one hundred thousand percent with what you just said. I've got a list of bills here, and I don't know what's going on, and I don't think you do either.
Most of the time, when people have to use more than a hundred percent, it's because they understand where they're standing on that. You know that you were being inaccurate and are misleading the people that you're talking to with this. You understand that, I get it. You are completely against the, the program switching from Southern Health Partners private to the health department.
Yeah.
For many reasons. But you understand that the costs are generated by both the program and for medical costs. If you for one second are going to say that you're going to try to deny, now, you're going to say it in two different ways. You're going to say, one, that the sheriff and the sheriff's office-
You've been taking lessons from Ernie, haven't you? You're in here trying to tell me what to think, and that's not what this is about.
No, I'm telling you-
This is about digging into what your costs are and seeing how good or bad the management is in the sheriff's department, and I'm seeing things in here that I don't like.
And you're seeing things that don't exist. Dig into it. Dig into it. Bring in some people to dig into it for you. Understand what you're actually talking about, and it's more than just rhetoric and political innuendo. The other people on this board understand what's going on.
They do.
You understand what's going on. You're just, you're just choosing to say other words.
Well, let me ask you this. What are you in here asking for today? Because I don't see a specific request here. I see a listing of a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars worth of stuff. What are you asking for? What are we trying to do?
The paperwork, which is paperwork that everybody in here has, which is clear to everybody on this board except for you, and you've been a board member for twenty years now.
That's right. I'm kind of dumb.
And you still don't understand the paperwork that's sitting in front of you, is that there is a request at this particular point in time for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional funding to pay medical bills.
Any, any other, any other questions?
I got, I got one.
Let Commissioner brief.
This is, oh, yeah, this is, this is nothing different from what you've been doing. You just got it broke out on the line items, is that correct?
I'm sorry, Chief.
That, that is correct. That is correct. It's going to look different because it's different vendors. We have always paid medical bills for people that have sought treatment and have had it
in the hospital. It's just, it's gonna look different.
So, what you're saying, if we was doing it the same way we done it last year, it would be the same, probably it's, it looked like it would be less dollars. It just broke out in a different category.
This year's, this year's a tough year for medical expenses in general.
The decrease or the decrease?
It's increased. The, the need for medical expenses has increased for actual people going to the hospital, doctor's office, of mental health and seeking treatment on them.
And my next question is, and I don't argue with what you do, because I don't know what you do. You, you get paid the big bucks to run the jail. I don't. But, but my question is, how do you determine which person gets professional mental health? I mean, is this telemedicine, or do you have someone on staff that, that?
I can give you the mechanics, but I probably excuse Lieutenant Brian too soon.
Well, that's what I thought I was talking to.
I thought I got some force from the program.
I got excused. I got excused myself.
Go ahead. I mean, I understand when you say you got to, you got to get them this treatment for medical help, I mean, they're tearing up the place, doing everything they can. But, is it telemedicine that dictates to you whether they have this mental health service come in?
Great question. Great question. No.
Okay.
And the good thing with this provider is it's a flat monthly fee regardless of how many times we call them, use them, regardless.
Okay. So, then my other part to that question is, have we, have we stopped sending, I think we used to send them to Buckner when they was, when they had mental problems, or is that closed down, or one of them in Raleigh closed down, didn't it?
We'll send them to Raleigh Central Prison for safekeeping if they have mental health issues. One of the other factors that's driven up some of these costs is the mental health medications that we've had to use. Those protocols are horrifically expensive to include some HIV protocols that are very expensive that we cannot anticipate. It's tough to, it's tough to know what that, those costs are gonna be. We can do an average of how many years, then we get this mental health, and if you read the papers and all the mental health facilities that are closing, we're the ad hoc mental health facilities, and when we have to provide a lot of mental health meds, they're expensive, Commissioner.
I got you.
But, the, the, as far as treatment for mental health, it's a flat rate regardless.
Regardless.
We can call him a million times a night, all, all night long, all day long, and it's the same price.
The trips to Buckner that you were speaking, we're still going to Buckner from time to time, and a lot of times, those are the evaluations for capacity when it comes to criminal trials.
I got you.
So, that will be separate and apart from there, but we still do that.
Yes, I mean, I mean, is that for mental people, just caring people for safekeeping anyway? You take them to Buckner?
When we go to Buckner, it's usually specifically for an evaluation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
One more, one more question. Are you asking this, for this money right now, or can you wait until budget time to get?
I'll take it.
Yes, sir.
Um, once again, this is a conversation that started in October, and to me, it's a, it's exactly what it is. It's a conversation. The request that's being made was after a conversation that I had with the Chief Financial Officer about seeing where we are as far as trends go. We still have a lot of unknowns when it comes to the cost with the jail being closed. I mean, we're not back up and running on that. So, you know, going into the fourth quarter, you know, after that conversation with the Chief Financial Officer, that's why it's here today. It is, you know, we are gonna do, and we have done, we've done everything that we can through the other parts of our budget to start cutting down in every area that we can because of the issues that we're having. And, you know, our, our plan is to have where we are gonna try to meet every, every dollar that we're gonna ask for, we're gonna try to meet with, with a cut in the budget that we already have on a pretty lean budget that we had from the beginning. You know, so, we're gonna continue to do that. It's really the decision of the board, you know, on the timing of this, you know, we're gonna do everything that we can, and hopefully, we're not gonna need to dip into this money at all. But, there's too, there's too many questions that we have to answer now, moving, moving.
And either would you...
Yes, my answer was, my question was, do you have to have it right now, or, or can you make it to, to the, to budget time?
We, um, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say words, and then I'm gonna let the Chief Financial Officer correct me. We have got funds in our budget. You know, we, you know, we have itemized lines, and we try to stick to that as much as possible. We can't, we don't write checks that we can't cash. We have funds that are in our budget now. We are gonna do everything that we can to make sure that that is the case, and we're not gonna have to have any additional other than what's already been added for what we have, but I don't know. So, i- if this is something that, that we need to table now and address later, that's the board's decision, then I'm fine with that. But, I, I don't wanna overspeak and overgo your Chief Financial Officer because she's, you know, she's legally responsible for the, for the checks that are going out.
Yeah, just to give you a little bit of background on how we arrived at a budget number for this line. This time last year, April last year, May last year, when the three of us, Brian, Chief Deputy and I were sitting down and going through his line items, you know, we had seen in the past where there had been just huge arbitrary numbers put in both meals, the meal line item, the, excuse me, the medical line item, and, and even the safekeeping line item, to the tune, some were four hundred thousand dollars, I believe, in the medical line item. And what we said is, let's go back and look historically at what we've spent, and let's budget based on that. And if we have a big medical event or several medical events, then we know we've got to provide that medical service for those inmates, and we'll just have to come back before the board and ask for an additional appropriation. And that's where we are tonight. We looked at the average historical spending for medical. It was a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. I'm not gonna name any names, but I've, I've had some discussions with Chief Deputy, and there's an inmate that has over seventy thousand dollars' worth of medical expenses just himself.
It's him, huh?
And so, that, our medical costs are unusually high this fiscal year. So, so here we are, we've got a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars budgeted. We've had additional medical expenses due to events that we could not foresee. So, we are coming back to you tonight because we have spent the hundred and fifty-three thousand, and we're only probably six or seven months into this budget because, you know, they're a month or two behind in billing. So, I'm anticipating we'll need an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's if nobody has a heart attack or a stroke or a major event between now and June thirtieth.
I, I'll add that it wasn't just last year that we began budgeting this way. It was fourteen fifteen. It was the first budget that, that I presented before the board, and, and we've done that each time, and, and we've been fortunate. We've been lucky when it comes to medical bills for the first couple of years, and this year is, and, and I'm hoping that it's, it's not a normal year this year. I'm hoping that this is not the normal, that it's just the exception, but, you know, where, where it just goes to, that, that's the information.
Christine, so what you...
If this makes you feel any better, what we do want to explore next year is maybe putting in place a stop-loss policy. There are insurance policies out there. I believe there's one through the Sheriff's Association where we can buy a stop-loss policy where we pay up to a certain amount. It's gonna be a large amount, maybe up to the first twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand, and we buy an insurance policy that kicks in to pay any additional, additional over that. We're going to explore that in next year's budget.
Wouldn't hurt if we put some money in there to stay in some of the bonds, Chief.
We had a stop-loss policy when we had Southern Health, and the prices were controlled because Southern Health was at risk with us, and they, the evil profit makers, but they managed to keep our prices down. I'm back to what I predicted when we did this with the Health Department and the Sheriff's Department, and nobody is in charge, folks, and that's why the good times are rolling. The expenses are gonna go, keep right on going. They're gonna go right on through the ceiling. Because we're, the law does not require us to provide better healthcare to inmates than we, the citizens of Beaufort County can afford. This has become a social program, and nobody is in charge.
Uh, Brian, you, you appeared to wanna make a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is one of the most difficult items we deal with in the budget every year, just as, as Chief Financial Officer said and as Chief Rose has said. Our goal when we came into budget making was that we try to look at actual costs based on historical trends, and then we, then we budget for that. And if there are anomalies that we can't anticipate, if somebody who comes in, and I'll tell you a horror story, when I was in Grandwell County, had a, had a DUI guy coming in on the weekend, and he had a stroke. He was doing weekend time, and it was a DUI, and he had a stroke, and it cost us a quarter of a million dollars. I know that stirs some big emotions in people, and you say, well, they ought not to be in the jail to begin with, and if they're sick, don't put them in the jail. I'm gonna, I'm gonna quote Chief Rose, and if you're, if you need to be in the jail, you need to be in the jail, no matter what your medical conditions are. And the state of North Carolina requires us to look after those prisoners to a certain level, not concierge and fancy medicine, but basic medicine, basic human rights stuff to look after them. And if they're sick, they're sick, and we've gotta do that. And, and we don't wanna be in a situation where we're saying, well, okay, maybe you've raped three people and you're a murderer, but gosh, you got a lot of medical bills, so we're gonna turn you loose because we don't have to pay for that. If you, if you ought to be in the jail, you ought to be in the jail. And, and what we do is, we, we, we set a budget, and we hold our breath that we don't get an inmate that comes in who has a heart attack or who has a stroke, because we do own those until they're out of the, out of the system. But, that's just part of it, and there's no way we can anticipate that, or, or we just deal with it as it comes. But, it is one of the most difficult things that we do, and that's why we say, we look at historic trends, and we try to figure what that's gonna be, and we try to budget for that. And then anomalies, we've said to you, we wanna come back to you with anomalies and say, look, we just couldn't have figured this one. Otherwise, we're in the same situation that the Chief Financial Officer said. We're throwing five hundred thousand dollars at it just because, well, if we throw five hundred thousand dollars out there, we're never gonna go over. And then, at the end of the year, you've got four hundred that you roll back, and everybody goes, wow, y'all saved a lot of money. No, you didn't. You just budgeted too much to start with. So, that's what we've told y'all as a board in our budget-making process. That's the way we wanna do things. So, this is an example of that, and we're gonna continue to have these conversations.
So, historically, we were budgeting about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in, in these programs.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
It was, it was a little more than that, but we budgeted some savings because, if you'll remember, like the chief said, we've got two components that make up this line item. We've got the, the new program and the actual medical expenses. So, we have budgeted more in the past, but we reduced that for the savings for the program with the Health Department, partnering with the Health Department.
Okay, we got a question, Commissioner Langley.
I don't know who answered it, Chief, or Lieutenant. This, this person who has these medical bills of seventy thousand dollars, is a class A, B, C, D felon? I mean, without disclosing...
The person I spoke to with the county manager and finance officer was actually to, was serving probationary time.
Jesus Christ.
They...
Quick dip.
Yeah, quick dips and, or something that was sentenced by the court.
Any other questions this way?
You with, you with your best.
Well, yeah, I got, I wanna, you know, I wanna make a statement. We're only talking about one or two line items in here. There's a whole lot more to this than what we're talking about tonight. You know, you're talking about five or six hundred thousand dollars, folks. You're not talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they wanna talk to you about. There's a lot more to this. We were paying Southern Health Partners at least two hundred and fifty thousand a year, and they were holding, keeping our costs down. We got, we're paying the Health Department, we're paying this, we're paying that. There's a lot more to this. This thing is run wild. It's just what I said it was when they came to us last year. Nobody is in charge when it comes to holding costs down. They're letting the good times roll.
Do you have anything specific that you would like to talk about during your six or seven months of scrutinizing and looking into every detail of what's going on, other than just, I'm gonna throw it out big, and, you know, I'll, I'll use your own quote against you. You can fool some of the people some of the time, but you can't fool all of the people all of the time. That's what you're trying to do.
Charlie, you've never answered the question that I asked to begin with. Who is signing off on this? You're shutting me down. And who is signing off on this? And who is in charge of this? You have never answered the question of who signs for the medical cost in the jail. I can only presume it's the sheriff.
It's a little bit more complicated than that, because I'd say that you bear some of the weight of that, well, Commissioner Richardson, and you know that.
All right, we spinning...
Okay, we, we're, we're down to...
I just want one, yeah, question.
Question.
Charlie, there's nothing in here that we're doing more than we have to do. We're doing what's, what's required us when somebody enters as a prisoner. Whatever treatment we have to give them, we're required to do it. We're required to give them their medication, like if you have an AIDS patient, we can't just take them off the medication. We have to maintain that medication regimen, correct?
Well, we're doing everything that we can from, to comply with the law.
That's it.
And to comply with human decency, which goes along with the law.
Correct.
You know, so, no, we're not, we're not, you know, trying to, you know, nobody's getting cosmetic surgery or anything like that. We are doing, we are trying to do that, we, what we can so we can legally satisfy our requirements to, to save the county from liability and litigation, but also because it's, it's the thing that you're supposed to do. You know, the laws are in place to be minimums. We're supposed to do what we can to take care of the people that are in our charge, and that, I mean, and that's, that's where it's at. There can be arguments over whether we did or whether we didn't, or whether we are or whether we aren't, but I'm telling you that if there's anything that, that we need to do when it comes to people that is in our care and our charge, then we do that.
I believe, I believe you, Chief.
Okay, we, we, we've heard the recommendation and the discussion to adopt the Budget Amendment request, the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay the medical...
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Brennan, a second by Commissioner Busio.
I just got a question to, to, uh, our finance officer. Is this gonna level this cost out, or is this just to put money there in case more bills come in? I understand you say you budget it conservatively, but it would, like, do, do, they owe the people already?
We continue to spend over the next four or five months to the end of the year what we've spent so far. This is what's needed in that line item.
So, it's not needed this day right here? We're, we're looking at the trend that we're going.
We need it for the remainder of the fiscal year.
I got you. I got you.
For me to be able to pay the, the bills.
Pay the bills.
And, and we're getting the service. I've, I've got to pay the bills.
I understand. That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, vote with six one. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Chief. We're down to item number seven, the security upgrades for the county public schools and Beaufort Community College. Commissioner Busio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna make a motion. I just wanted to give some background information. What we're seeing is an increase in school shootings around the United States, and based upon that, I'm strongly recommending, and it's also appropriate, that Beaufort County establish a working group of principals, which would include Beaufort Community College, Beaufort County Public Schools, the Sheriff's Office, and the county. And where they'll, these, this group of principals will study and recommend upgrades to security, to, to increase school security. The working group would also have the authority to reach out and seek additional information and recommendations from all of the, so if they need that expert, they can reach out and, and get that expert in. It would be a small group of eight people. It would be the principals involved, and I've already talked to, so, representing the public schools would be the superintendent and one other member of this public school system. I spoke to the president of Beaufort Community College. It would be himself and another member of his staff. I spoke into the Sheriff's Office and the sheriff and the deputy, chief deputy, and they'll both be as part of this group. And then I'm also recommending in my motion that it would be the chairman and the, uh, the county manager. Um, so it would be, like I said, a working group of principals. Uh, it would be a small group so they can accomplish something. So my motion is as follows. Motion to establish a working group. The president, one additional member from the Beaufort Community College, the school superintendent, one additional member from the Beaufort County Public School System, the sheriff, chief deputy from the sheriff's office, and the chairman of the board of commissioners and the county manager. The intention for this group of principals is to provide recommendations and proposals on upgrading security in the Beaufort Community College and the public schools. These recommendations and proposals could include the following, but it's not meant to be all-inclusive. Physical security, electronic cameras, fencing, metal detectors, staffing training, et cetera. These are things to be considered. They can consider other things. But it would be up to this group to come back to this, to the commissioners during the budget process and make a recommendation of how we can upgrade the security. I don't think any of us want to sit here and 30 days from now to 45 days from now and say we did nothing and we're facing something in our school systems. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I'd like to second Commissioner Busio's motion. Questions? Discussions?
I, you know, I'm not going to vote for this. The reason I'm not going to vote for this is every time we start going out and appointing blue ribbon committees, we get another level of bureaucracy that we don't need. And we get a bunch of, we get a bunch of requests for additional money. The simple truth is, the school superintendent and the president of the community college are both capable of doing this by themselves without commissioners trying to micromanage it. And they've done a good job up till now, and this is a level of bureaucracy that we don't need. If I did anything, I'd give schoolteachers guns.
See, I figured it.
Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Vote was six to one. Okay, we're down to, um, item number eight, notification of next of kin by sheriff's office when inmate is admitted to the hospital. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, we've heard, we've heard from the Anderson family about this. It's a heartbreaking story, uh, of what happened to this young man. And it does turn out that the sheriff has no policy because he's been asked repeatedly, what is your policy? And he's never answered the question. So I'm making a motion tonight that, that is as follows, that the sheriff is to notify, this is, we can put, I would push for an ordinance on this, not just a resolution, because these guys have a tendency to ignore resolutions. So we'd start the ordinance process, uh, that the sheriff is required to notify the next of kin, and he has that information, when someone is admitted to the hospital. I don't mean taken for a, a hospital visit or emergency room visit. I mean, when they're admitted to the hospital, it's serious enough that the next of kin should be notified. That is my motion.
And I second that motion. And I'll tell you the reason why. It's the way I feel about that situation. Uh, it pertains to Beaufort County and the people that's in it. And when the sheriff takes custody of a prisoner, arrests someone, he's in the sheriff's jurisdiction whether he's in jail or he's in the hospital. So I think it's really the sheriff's department's problem to notify the members of, of the, of the person's family just as soon as he possibly can. So that's the reason I'm seconding Commissioner Richardson's motion.
Any other comments?
Can I ask a clarification? Is this to start the ordinance process?
Yeah, I think we should do this as an ordinance.
So do an ordinance for this or start the ordinance process?
Well, yeah, well, start the ordinance process. We can have an ordinance that says that requires the sheriff to do that.
How does the sheriff have the next of kin? And, and who is the next?
When they come into the jail, they fill out papers of who their next of kin is. And if he doesn't know, he can find out. This is a serious event.
They should get an emergency phone number.
I just don't think next of kin is a, is a legal term. Why not a family member? That would, that would be...
I, I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, next of kin can be children.
I know, yeah.
My wife is really not a kin, but she's married to him.
Yeah.
Potentially, there's all kinds of problems with the terminology.
That he notify the family.
What does wife mean?
And since we're starting the ordinance process, if, if this passes, we have some room to do some, uh, to do some, uh, word mechanics on the wording of the ordinance.
Well, if I was in, in the custody of the sheriff and you didn't notify my wife and notified my son, I'd be very upset.
Yeah.
I would be very upset.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, if it's a, I'll wait till... If it's a medical issue, HIPAA, it falls under HIPAA. HIPAA is very clear on who you can notify and not notify. So if we're talking about a hospital situation, the hospital has, if you go into the hospital, you give them a name. That's the only person that they can notify. And if there happens to be some circumstances where they notify, let's say, the wife or the mother, that's the only person that can be notified. If an uncle comes in and wants to be told, or the kids want to come in to, they can't. I don't think, believe, we have enough information here to make a decision. Number one, did the hospital notify some of them? Did the sheriff follow everything? Are these people trying to sue us or sue the county? And they're trying to generate a lawsuit and we're, we're going to get involved in it? We have no information here. And if it's a HIPAA thing, I don't care what ordinance you have, you could write to you blue in the face, nothing's going to ever happen. You'll get sued. And the person who gives you the information will get sued, if you understand anything about HIPAA.
Look, the, the way HIPAA works is when they, when they go into jail, they're going to fill out a paper that says who, who is to be notified.
And how do you know?
You know, you're trying to make this into another unsolvable problem, Commissioner. This is not an unsolvable problem.
No, you're...
I said, start the process.
You're pontificating.
That means all of these things that people are bringing up will be addressed before the process is over in order to have the ordinance.
You're pontificating again.
That's your opinion, which is worth very much.
And how do you know the person didn't give a name? And how do you know the right person wasn't notified? Do you know that for a fact?
He fills it out and he signs it, or he fills it out or he gives us the information. You can only use best effort.
And how do you know the hospital didn't notify the right person?
Again, you're trying to undermine something. Let's get off of it and get into the human race where we notify loved ones about bad situations. Try to make it work.
You, you, you guys let somebody else have the floor. Okay, Commissioner Langley.
All right. And I understand exactly what Commissioner Richardson is saying, and, and I, I agree with him. I mean, uh, there are, uh, next of kin relatives that are signed in when, when they, when they go into the jail. And I don't see a problem with simply notifying family that somebody's gone to the hospital. And you, you talk about HIPAA. HIPAA's not going to come into play. The only thing you're saying is Jerry's in the hospital. That's not HIPAA. So we, I don't, I don't really see a problem with that. Anything above and beyond that, yeah, you may get into trouble, but simply letting family members know your son was in the, it was, was here in the jail, he's had a heart attack, he's in the hospital. There's nothing wrong with doing that. And that's just the way I feel about that.
Mr. Chairman?
All right.
Just to further what I said earlier. And the reason I mentioned that, that the sheriff's department needs to be the one that does the contact, because it'd be easy for, for something like that to fall through the cracks if you're waiting for somebody else to do it. So I think the person that's in charge of the, of the person that is in jail needs to kind of make that contact.
Okay, you've heard the discussion. Uh, I'm going to oppose it from the standpoint that this is within the elected position and the decision of the sheriff. And, uh, nobody has, has told me that we do not have a policy and that the policy was not, uh, followed. So I will not support that because this is under the, uh, under the guidance of the sheriff and the sheriff's department. And I have a lot of confidence in Chief Rose and, and what goes on over in the sheriff's department. So I will oppose.
Mr. Chairman, I want to remind you, the lawsuit's going to come to you. It's not going to come to the sheriff.
I, you know, you, you seem to, go ahead, mister.
I, you know, my mother's 88 now, and we're kind of going through the same thing. Uh, we, we went to see an attorney, how do we handle this process? Two years ago, you said, you better have our attorney, you better have a HIPAA, because that's the way the hospital's going to take care of it. Now it's two years later and we're going to another attorney, it's the same thing. It's, that's, it's, it's a difficult situation, but the way the hospital works, it's going, it's going to be, whose name is on there, they're going to start there. Any of your names not on that list, it makes it impossible for the hospital, I think, to, to do the things we'd like them to do, to do it the way they did it years and years ago, but...
If I go, I'm going to put my wife down there. I ain't, I mean, you ain't got the business calling my daughter.
Well, it does not have to be a family member. It could be anybody, a person of your own choice.
It could be anybody, but they're the only ones they can talk to the hospital.
Okay. Uh, we're ready to vote. So all those in favor of the, uh, motion, raise your right hand. Okay, all those opposed? Vote was four to three, and it passes. Okay, item number nine, the concealed carry by county employees. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I'm going to be brief with this. I'm back again. A lot of counties, since we've been bringing this issue up, have passed the concealed carry for county employees. And once again, I would, the, my motion is that the managers start the process of finding out what other counties have done, so that we can, uh, decide what our policy will be for concealed carry for county employees. Uh, I'm, you know, shooting back is very important when these guys are coming at you. If you've got nothing except a sign on the wall that says no guns, that is not a defense.
Did you make a motion?
That's a motion.
I second a motion.
Got a motion and a second, uh, discussion.
I would like to say just a couple of words, not many, but, uh, as everybody in this room is aware of, there's shooting down in, in Florida. And there's a lot of opinions out there, what could have stopped that tragic shooting. Uh, I don't necessarily believe that teachers need to...
Oh, Jesus Christ.
Have, have weapons, but I believe there needs to be weapons on campus. Because if there's, if you put a sign up there that says this is a, a no-gun zone, that is just giving that bad guy the idea, well, I can go in there and I can kill as many people as I want to, and chances are, I'm going to get killed or kill myself, but I'm going to do what I went there to do. Uh, if you, if that person knows that there's somebody in that school with a gun, then he's going to think twice about what he's getting ready to do. And that's the reason I voted for, for this the last time, and that's the reason I'm going to vote for it this time.
So are you including the schools?
No, we can't.
The teachers?
We're, my motion is just for county employees. I, I understand commissioners around the school is that, has been a hot issue. I'm hoping that if, uh, county does it, the schools might do it.
Well, we can, we, you start somewhere.
Yeah, that's right. Start with the county.
Brian, you, did you?
I, I would ask the board to consider, when you are considering this, um, the other implications that come from that. If you're concerned that there are issues, um, with security at county facilities, I would suggest to you that the first step would be working on physical, physical security matters. Uh, I think you're doing that in your schools. You've provided school, you've provided funds to the schools to close off areas. You've provided funds to them to, um, lock doors, to be able to make sure they're, they're, they're hardened in certain ways. Um, I, I believe, if you believe that, you ought to do the same thing with county facilities. Um, I, I would also ask you to consider the dynamics that come into personnel issues, um, interactions with the public, and other things that we deal with on a daily basis, and throw into that a weapon.
Oh, no.
I, I mean, I, I'm just asking you to consider those things. You may, I, I'm sure you thought about them, but I would ask you from a staff level, I'd ask you from a management level to consider that, and what that, what other unintended consequences may come out of that. To, to say that we want to be able to shoot back, I'm not sure, I think everybody ought to hit the floor is what everybody needs to do. But, um, but I would just ask you to consider those things. We will do what this board directs us to do, but we're also charged with giving you what I think are management recommendations for you to make good policy decisions.
Mr. Chairman?
I, yes, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, what I would say to the managers, this, the reason I, the reason I worded the motion the way that I did was to give you an opportunity to, to find out what other people are doing and, and to have a, a bigger say in this, because you're the one that's ultimately going to have to live with it. And so I'm not diminishing anything about what you've said. I mean, the door is open, as far as I'm concerned. We just need to, and the motion is to start gathering the information and to look at this.
And also, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, speaking to Brian, um, I'm not suggesting that every employee of Beaufort County carries a weapon. I think that there should be a select few that are in situations where they may have to come across the situation to defend ourselves. Those are the people that I think they need to have a concealed carry.
Okay, we got two other commissioners. Commissioner Langley.
Well, Commissioner Brennan addressed part of it, because I was going to ask the chief, do you know all the county employees?
Do you know all county employees?
Mm-hmm. And so if, if you had an active shooter and you went in and you saw them brandishing a gun, what's your reaction is going to be?
You look for a threat.
Shooting.
If you had a gun, what's a threat?
Shooting.
Somebody with a gun, that's a threat.
Detroit.
Okay.
All the question.
Commissioner...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll, go ahead, Uncle, you got to whine about it.
I'm going to get you today.
I knew that.
Wait till you go out, I better not say it.
I'm going to give you your turn, so.
Oh, no, is he next? Is he next?
No, no. Go ahead.
I'm going to go next. All right. I, I, I agree with you, Brian, and, and everything you're saying. Um, I think when, when we look at, we look at firearms at work, like, well, first of all, I got a law enforcement background. I spent 23 years in law enforcement. I was in, in some shootouts, and it, and it's a very interesting concept. But I remember we always worked, we always wore ray jackets. And the reason we wore ray jackets is we had the symbols on the back and on the front so we didn't get shot. And I think, Charlie, our hearing aids aren't working too well, but I think you talked about, if you walk into a place, there's a guy with a gun, they may very well get shot, if they don't put the gun down. Is that what you said?
That the response from law enforcement is going to be to look for and neutralize the threat.
Okay.
If they see a person with a gun that they can't identify as someone who is a good guy, then that person is going to be looked at as a threat.
Yeah. So, so it's something to take in consideration. Now, I have a concealed permit. I carry a concealed permit. But the training for a concealed permit is much different than the law enforcement training that I undertook. And we had to, we had to re-qualify every quarter. And we used to have to pop up targets, and many times, we'd end up shooting a woman with the baby. Because you're, and there's noise going off, there's bullets going off. So unless you ever faced that, more than just being at a shooting range, five yards, 10 yards, 15 yards, you're not really qualified to put yourself in a situation such as that. One of the worst things that we have going on in the workplace is workplace violence by the employees that work there. Now, I agree, we should look at security. We should upgrade security. We have to take care of our employees. The other factors you're looking at when you talk about a weapon is intimidation. Now, you're going to require everybody to conceal it, or can they have their jacket off? When I worked in law enforcement, if you took your jacket off and had your gun on you, you got suspended for a day. You had to lock it up because they were afraid of intimidating the non-enforcement people in the office. The other thing is the liability, and I think you touched on that, Brian. You've got liability issues associated with a weapon in the workplace. Training, what training we're going to require. You're hearing everything now about increasing background investigations. You know what they're talking about? Mental health. When you do a background check now, there's no mental health check because of HIPAA. People laugh about HIPAA. But HIPAA prevents the law enforcement from picking up anything unmedical on an individual. And then you have people that have anger management. And then you have people that have anger management. If you want, I know some people carry weapons. I wouldn't want to be around them, because they have a tendency to go off, if somebody cuts them off or something. The violence tendencies. You've got all these things to consider. Be careful what you ask for. Then we got the, then they talk about employees should be aware that gun-related incidents can result, as I mentioned, liability. The Occupational Safety and Health Act, we're going to take that in consideration. Workers' compensation law, we're going to take that in consideration. Negligent hiring. If we hire the wrong person, and we say, "You're qualified, you can have a gun, you're that one person, this officer can have a gun," and they go off wacky and start shooting people, then what do we do from a liability perspective? And then what the chief deputy talked about, when the law enforcement comes in, how do you react? Do you drop the weapon? Do you keep shooting? Do you stand up? Do you panic? We have all these things to consider. And until we consider these things, I could never vote for a motion such as this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brian, let me go down to the...
I just wanted to clarify something, who'd say it?
Well, I'll come back to you, okay?
My dear friend Ron Buzzio covered exactly what I was going to say.
Mr. Evans? It's the same thing. I mean, if you haven't had that training, I've got my concealed weapon, and as Chief Rose is saying, I mean, I went out and had to fire in range and said, "Hey, this is fun." And next thing I know, I squeeze off another round, and I know what is in there. So thank God there was nobody in front of me. So it's a very dangerous thing. I think we need people patrolling. But, and again, I think the intimidation factor, I think we need that in the workplace. I mean, I'm not for it.
Okay, well, now we're back to you, Commissioner.
Okay, just a brief comment. Remember what Hood's motion was? It's a fact-finding...
Stop.
He's asking the county manager and his staff to look in to find out how other counties that have this gun policy in place, what they've done. And then it comes back to us, and we start looking at it, and we pick out the best one that we can. And Charlie, I think in North Carolina, you can carry a gun on your side even with no, with no carry permanent concealed carry. Is that right?
North Carolina is an open carry state. There are limitations to where you can go. If there's signage up there that prevents guns of any kind, and that would prevent that from legally occurring.
Right. That's all I have.
Okay. I guess I'm last. I've not had a single employee in the county to call me with a concern at wanting to carry a concealed weapon. I don't have any problems moving the motion forward to look at what some of the other counties have done. But I worked in the banking industry for almost 30 years, where we can expect a robbery every day. Not one employee in the bank carried a weapon. And that basically tells me that this is really kind of on the edge. I guess my question would be, if you've got an employee that's working in the county finance department, and they leave to go over to the courthouse, they're not allowed to carry it over in the courthouse, are they, Charlie? They're not allowed to carry it over to the school, if they were to drive over to the school. I think that we should be spending our time and effort and our monies in making the workplace a little bit more secure, just like we have in the schools, with some kind of locking mechanism or some kind of foyer where people have to, you know, go through some other I've had people threaten me in the banking industry and had a gun with them. And I'm not sure what, how I would have reacted if I'd had a gun. One of us would have got killed, because my dad always told me, "When you pull a gun, when you pull your gun out, you better use it. Otherwise, don't even have it in reach of yourself." I'm a little bit mixed on whether to vote for it or not. I understand what the motion is, and I understand that right now, we've got a lot of people really concerned. My biggest concern is in the school system with our kids, because as commissioners and as school board members and officials in this county, we're held responsible for things that happen to kids. I mean, every day when the bus picks up, my grandchildren, I'm holding this group and the school board and the sheriff's department, all the leadership, responsible. And I realize that when an employee goes to work every day, they're taking risk. So that's my two cents worth. So at this time, we're going to take a vote. We've got the motion and a second. All those in favor of moving forward with this, raise your right hand. Okay. Two. All those opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I want to make a motion and not do this again for six months.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, not to bring this back up for six months, for a six-month period. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Vote was five to two. Okay, we're down to item number 10, report requesting, I guess, an update on the Zalvan Hospital Authority Board. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I just have one question for Commissioner Buzzio on this, and then I'm going to let it go. Do you have any business connections in any of the businesses that you are connected with, with Vident? Do you do any consulting or any service work for Vident? No connections whatsoever. Okay, thank you.
Why would you ask that question?
I wouldn't answer it.
I don't have to answer it. I don't have to tell you why I ask that question. Political forum.
I wouldn't answer it.
I shouldn't have answered it.
That's right.
I think you've already updated on...
Yeah.
That it's in the attorney's hands.
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. All right, we're down to item number 11, the proposed tax department study. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, actually, the manager's going to do this. I made a request that the manager do it, and it would pick up and put on here that it was my request for me to do it, but I don't know anything about it. So the manager's going to...
This was the item we discussed at the retreat. It's a services provided by the Association of County Commissioners. It's a peer review, and they do it with all sorts of different departments. And this is an opportunity that we've talked to them about with the new farragut system and some different things that are going on, to come in and take a look at our system, both on the administrative, the administration side and the collection side, to tell us what kind of best practices may be that we could do better and see what our system looks like. So they're happy to do that for us. The only cost associated with it is meals, travel costs for folks who are coming down and doing that. It's actually not done by association staff members, it's done by peers across the state. So if you're a tax administrator, a tax collector, and you're at that level where the association has reached out to you to do that, they go around, and it's, so it's a peer review to help us with best practices. And it's just the association requests that the Board of Commissioners make that a formal request to the association to have that done.
Do you have a budget item or number?
No, and I think we could probably handle that under, I mean, it's not, it would be a day trip for anybody, more than likely, and you're talking about paying for somebody's lunch.
Okay.
Lunch and...
And mileage to come down. So it's really not a, really not a large cost. It's certainly something we think we can handle within one of the, either the Board of Commissioners' budget or the county manager's budget. But like I say, it's an opportunity to appear review, and we, this is a good step for us, and we would continue to look at other departments across the county with this opportunity.
Commissioner Richardson, you want to make a motion?
I move that we do it.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Brian. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you. We're down to the last item on the agenda, the bid offer to purchase. David?
Sir, we have... Could I interrupt just a second? I would like to be excused from this, because the person that's making this offer, I'm going to probably survey these lots for him if he gets the property, so I'd like to be excused.
Okay.
Let's see if I can put David, finish up and say something.
All right. I guess according to our procedure, we have to take a vote to excuse Commissioner Richardson.
So move.
Got a motion? Commissioner Booth, second by Mr. Brian or Buzzio, somebody.
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Buzzio. All those in favor of recusing, raise your right hand. Okay.
All right, sir, we have 10 new offers. We have $2,050 in deposits, and upon your approval, these will be advertised in the annuals and according to general statutes, if there's any upset bids.
So move.
Okay, got a motion to approve by Commissioner Booth. Second by Commissioner Brian. Any discussion?
I got one question just asked the attorney. The money that we're receiving for these land parcels, does it go into the general fund?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
Comes over here. Goes into...
It goes into the county bank account.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, the motion passes. At this time, Commissioner Booth.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say something for the viewing public, and I have been lampooned with, we are charging to use our courthouse and county facilities. I want to make it very, very clear that county commissioners do not charge to use the courthouse. That was not one of our votes, to charge to use the courthouse. Everywhere I go, I hear, "The county commissioners are charging, why are y'all charging us to use the courthouse?" That was a judge's order to have security. It was not the commissioners. If you want to use Beaufort County courthouse, it is still free, for as the commissioners are concerned. Now, your security is something different, but we don't have anything to do with security for using the courthouse for a meeting, family reunion meeting, or whatever. That's all I wanted to say.
After 5:00.
After 5:00.
Thank you, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Which one? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand.